Ms. Joy Hill. Mr. John Hartman.
You're.
Nicole Sullivan. Mr. Dave Condala. Mr. David Becker.
Here.
Ms. Elise Bayless. Ms. Ivan Angorola.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which its fans, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? There being no public comments, we move on to presentations.
All right, our first presentation this evening is of our Diamond Award. And we have one Diamond Award this evening, and that is Ms. Kaitlyn Cairns, who was nominated by her principal, Dr. Erica Berger. So, Dr. Berger, would you like to go ahead and present?
Good evening. So as we recognize advocacy in the month of November, Diamond Lake School is proud to highlight the work of Ms. Kaitlyn Cairns. Kaitlyn continuously advocates for her students by providing them with rigorous instruction, ensuring they feel supported and motivating them to master skills to the best of their ability. She sets appropriate expectations for her students and creates an inclusive environment that encourages her students to set goals, dream big, and level up, lean in, and sparkle out. The joy and laughter that Kaitlyn brings to her classroom helps our students believe in themselves and motivates them to come to school each morning. Students in Kaitlyn's classroom know that they are loved, they are supported, and that she truly advocates for them on a daily basis. Kaitlyn also serves as the team lead for our special education department. Her professional values and demeanor are what drives her to advocate for her department and ensure that they are part of our collaborative data-driven decision-making process. We are privileged to have Kaitlyn on staff at DLS, and her students have a quick message to show their appreciation.
So congratulations, Karen. I mean, Karen, I mean, Kaitlyn, come on up.
Come on up.
That's Kaitlyn for you.
Yeah. Congratulations. You don't need to say anything, but you're welcome to if you'd like to.
I want to start by thanking the district for allowing me the opportunity to teach her at Diamond Lake. Over the past five years, while not every day has been a walk in the park, the support I have received from Dr. Berger, my teammates, and other colleagues have made those difficult days worth it. I look forward to coming to work every day and seeing the smiling faces of my students. Thank you again for this award and allowing me to continue using my passion to make a difference in my students' lives.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, our second presentation this evening, just as exciting, is our Fall STAR Data Update that Dr. Cunningham and the principals will share. They'll share each of your school results as well as next steps and progress reports. So, Dr. Cunningham, the floor is yours.
We're working. Thank you so much. All right. Well, good evening. Thank you for joining us for the fall edition of the STAR Data Review. Before we go into that, just to talk a little bit about our Illinois Report Card that came out while we were away in October, and all three of our schools are in the commendable designation for the 2022-2023 school year. This is just a graphic I included for the board that informs what that score is made of this year. It really is very much largely the same as last year. I will point out that Diamond Lake School does receive a score for ELA and math, even though they do not test IAR until third grade. What they do is they retroapply the third graders for proficiency and fourth graders for growth in Diamond Lake School. So, just so you're aware, the Diamond Lake does get a score there. I will mention that attendance is a large part of the score. Chronic absenteeism is really the measure they're referring to, which is when you're missing 10% of school days without a valid excuse, which is 18 days out of a school year typically. So that is something that a lot of districts, or that's something that's a huge part of what the state measures. And so that's included in our metric, and I'll talk about MTSS a little bit later, and how we're supporting attendance in our own district. And then, EL progress to proficiency is also a measure in this, but they're tracking our English language learners and their path to can be considered what's considered the IAR measure of proficiency. Last year, I mentioned that there's some really nice data pieces when you just look at our district comparatively, demographically. This year, we are the 16th highest multilingual learner population in the state. And then, if I was to look at this year's numbers compared to last year's data, we would actually move up to the sixth highest by percentage of multilingual learners in the state. However, a lot of districts have a major uptick in multilingual learners. And so, that isn't necessarily what it'll look like in next October, but it's interesting data that informs really what our needs are, what our strengths are. So, that's just a little bit of an IAR update. But we're here tonight for talking about our own goals and priorities. And in this particular case, it's priority one and one A specifically, which is improving student growth in English Language Arts, ELA, and Math. So, our goal fall to spring is again, is 100% of our students will grow from fall to spring on ELA and Math. And that's what we're going to present on our fall data tonight. We'll also update the board on some questions around the summer school data, some pieces that were asked in the September update on summer school, so that will show up as well. Just a couple reminders on definitions of terms. There's also included for the school board in the board packet, a glossary of key terms for any terminology we might be using that maybe kind of gets lost in the shuffle of explanation. But essentially, tonight, we'll use colors, but we're referring to three tiers of intervention. Tier one, which is 30th percentile and above, tier two, 29th to 12th, and tier three is the 11th percentile or below. And then, we will assess this as a benchmark three times a year. The fall test, the fall is typically treated as a pre-test. In the Renaissance STAR platform, the winter being kind of your first measure, and then the spring being kind of your post-test comparing winter to spring. And so that's where you can see a lot of changes in scores, which we can talk about when that test comes. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Berger. I'm going to pass you the, I'm going to try to pass this down, so we're able to do that. I'm going to pass it to Dr. Berger first, who's going to go into DLS's assessment.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cunningham. So, looking at our first round of assessments, this has us looking at English Language Arts from kindergarten through second grade. There are two different types of assessments children can take at this particular time. One of them is early literacy foundational skills, which is generally taken in kindergarten, usually also in the start of the school year for first, and then we also do have some second-grade students taking it. This is what builds the foundation for the development, looking at alphabet, phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, and comprehension. And as students get to levels within this assessment and are able to move on to the reading, this is when we're looking at developmental skills and the application coming from an author-literary argument vocabulary and comprehension perspective. The goal always at Diamond Lake School is that our students will leave second grade and transfer over to West Oak being at that reading assessment level, so that in third grade, they're absolutely taking the reading assessment. They are not taking the early literacy, unless absolutely necessary. For example, if it was a student who transferred to us from another country, speaking another language, having very limited English experience. So, looking at our set of scores for kindergarten with the ELA assessment, they took early literacy only to start the school year. This is our benchmark. Tier one, 20 students fell. Tier two, 18. And tier three, we had 28. Very typical scores for the start of the year, as it's a difference usually of students who had experience with early literacy from a preschool program or in a childcare setting, as opposed to students who have not. This is the first time that they've been in a school setting and have had an assessment. So, this is a great start for us. It's where we typically see our students score, and it allows us to have a considerable growth margin, which I'm sure we will see in the winter. And then, looking at math for kindergarten as well, tier one, 35 students. Tier two, 18 students. Tier three, 14 students. And our kindergarten students generally score higher in math than they do in ELA right from the start. Much of this having to do with number recognition and identification and some of the simpler problems. Test is also given to students through a headset, so they're able to hear the questions out loud. So, they're able to apply a lot more of the math skill versus the literacy skill that they may be lacking that we saw in the first round of scores. And then, if we look at the comparison for our first-grade students and second-grade students, we are looking at the growth that these students made from spring to fall. So, when we look at these first-grade scores, this is looking at the growth that these students made when they completed kindergarten and where they started this school year. So, last spring, they finished with 52 students in tier one to 18 in the fall, eight in the spring in tier two, nine in the fall, six in tier three in the spring, and 19 in the fall. And when we look at this comparison, this is also looking at early literacy versus the number of students that were able to already move into taking the reading assessment this fall. So, when we look at the end of the year, last year, we had 13 students in tier one. We already had 18 in tier one to start the school year for first grade, one student who fell in tier two, and two students who fell in tier three. So, this was actually a significant shift in the amount of students that were able to take that reading assessment right from the beginning of the year in comparison to past years. Then, when we look at second grade, again, these were students who in the spring, they were in first, and now this fall are in second. We had 13 students on the early exam in tier one. Last spring, we had zero for this fall. Last spring, we had nine students in tier two, three this fall. Last spring, we had 14 in tier three in the spring, and then 19 this fall. So, we had a little bit of a shift there. There were more students that came in the early lit falling into that tier three, but those are students that we targeted right from the beginning of the year, because we also took assessments, this assessment data early, and we had intervention services starting on day two of the school year. So, we started nice and early. And then, when we look at the reading test for second grade, we went tier one. It was 52 last spring to 48 this fall. Tier two, 17 last spring to 11 this fall. Tier three, eight last spring to 23 this fall. So, again, we saw some shift with a higher end in that tier three margin, but we immediately responded with intervention services for these students.
Can I just ask a quick question? And I hate to interrupt you, but.
No.
Um, when you're looking at the spring data, those aren't the same kids as in the fall, are they? Or are you looking at spring second graders and then fall second graders?
These are the same exact kids. So, when we look at spring.
Spring is where they were at the end of first grade?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I just.
To where they fell at the beginning of this year.
Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. So, then, when we look at math, it's that same comparison again of seeing where these students ended last year in the spring and where they started this fall. So, our first graders, again, in the spring, they were kindergartners. So, we had 51 students in tier one, 13 students in tier two, and two students in tier three. Those same students who are now in first grade took the first-grade fall math test. 56 in tier one, seven in tier two, and six in tier three. So, it was overall 41% growth for our students and really high scores in general for the start of the year for math. So, that was wonderful. And then, looking at our second graders, again, the spring scores we're looking at, they were in first grade in the spring. Tier one, we had 66 students. Now, looking at the fall, these same students who now took the second-grade test, 61 in tier one. When we look at tier two, it was 12 last spring compared to 23 this fall. And then, tier three, we were looking at nine last spring to 13 this fall. It was overall, we had 36% of our students show growth. We did have an increase when we look at tier two in comparison. But again, this was the start of the year. Typical scores for us, seeing that there is some loss or some regression over the summer, depending on how many of our students had participated in summer school, how many of our students kept with practice over the summer and things of that nature. And again, just like we did with early literacy and with reading, we started intervention right away. Same thing with math, those students that qualified for intervention started on day two. We also wanted to share with you, these are the Spanish scores for Spanish literacy. So, you're going to see much fewer students here, because these are only our students that are participating in the dual language. But what it was, was last year, these kids that are in first grade were in kindergarten in the spring. In past years, we have not given the Spanish Language Arts test to kindergartners. This year, in an effort to collect more data and have more benchmarks, starting in the winter, kindergarten will take the Spanish test. So, they'll take it both in the winter and in the spring, so that we're going to be able to see more of a growth margin for students as they're starting within our dual-language program. So, what we saw this fall, though, first grade for early literacy in Spanish, 15 in tier one, seven in tier two, and six in tier three. And then, we already had five students who had qualified for the reading in Spanish. So, this was much beyond just the basic linguistic skills. Four students in tier one, and one student who scored in tier two. So, there was a very high performance for our dual-language students for SLA. And then, our second-grade students, again, these were students who were in first grade in the spring, and now looking at their shift. Early literacy, we went from 12 in tier one to seven, four in tier two to seven, two in tier three to two in tier three again in the fall. But when we look at these numbers, we also look at the shift of the amount of kids that were able to go from early literacy to the reading in comparison for much more development within the second language here. We went from 14 in tier one to 13, five in tier two to eight, three in tier three to one. So, it was an overall 30% of our students within the dual program had already shown growth within the SLA. So, when we take all that data, it allows us to think about what is this telling us? And what do we want to do to be able to address these achievement gaps? So, these are very typical fall benchmark scores for us. When we go back and look at performance in years past, this is very much what we saw in the fall. It allowed us to think about where intervention was needed and always providing it to tier two and tier three students, and being able to address those needs immediately. And it also allows us to identify that there is a significant need for linguistic support with our English language learners. Whether those students are in a general education classroom or in a dual-language classroom, there also needs to be that additional EL support for our kids to be able to master that second language. So, thinking about how we're going to address the gaps, one of the pieces that we have coming into play this year is the adoption of the gold formative assessment system. This is for our early diamonds learning program, so that we will have formative assessment data collected with our preschoolers to thinking about what that looks like for appropriate placement within our kindergarten classrooms and what other services and supports we will need to provide for them. Reexamining our dual-language enrollment process to maximize our bilingual support, thinking about, is it just a matter of the screening and placement of students? Or is it things that need to be added, such as a lottery, or things like that with the number of students that we have? The addition of kindergarten, taking the Spanish early literacy assessment for winter and spring, of course, is going to help us to be able to see the growth margin within that development of the second language, sharing student work at grade level, and building leadership level meetings. I'm sorry, building team level meetings to enhance the knowledge of all of our students' names, strengths, and needs. It's something that we've put into place this year that has really been great for staff to be able to share what they're experiencing with their students, be able to help and support one another, provide new ideas, provide feedback. It's become a much even stronger collaborative environment than we've had in the past. And then, also consistently progress monitoring our students, having that system in place that we have our data meetings once a month. From these driven team meetings that we have, we're able to make some decisions, think about our curriculum, be able to provide each other with the best possible ways to address the needs, and then thinking about how we're also differentiating and grouping our students within our classroom based on that data. So, that is all of the exciting news about DLS, and with that, I will pass it on to Mr. Freiberger.
First of all, thank you for sharing all that great information. I have just a question about like the newcomers that are coming to our district. Are they typical newcomers that we have seen in the past? Or are they coming with more trauma, more refugee issues, more?
Awesome question.
Less, less school-ready in their home language, or more school-ready? I know a lot of districts are getting a lot of Ukrainian and Russian students who are actually very academic in math especially. I'm just wondering if we've seen any kind of trend or.
Yeah, great question. So, actually, our latest student who just registered with us just came from Israel. Yes, wonderful family and so glad that they're here with us. Definitely, their child had not been in school, obviously, for several weeks now. So, it was absolutely wonderful that they're here with us and in a safe environment, and their child is back to school. English extremely limited, but the great power of Google and everything else has helped us through to be able to translate a lot of information. And the student is just so glad to be here and learning English, he's doing everything he possibly can. So, that has been lovely. We also had six families come to us from a migrant situation. Again, just happy to be in school and in a safe environment, some of them out of school as long as a year, because the family had been moving and things like that. And the parents just being so appreciative of the resources and everything we have to offer, because all of them came to us homeless also. So, they came from homeless situations and came here homeless and are working with mano a mano that our district works with so often as a resource guide. So, it's lovely for them to have the help and support, but really, they're here to work and they're here to learn, and they're just here to be safe and feel loved like they do by all of our staff. So, the English language piece, of course, has been tough. Our dual-language rooms are filled. They're really busting at the seams, for lack of a better term. But our dual staff has been absolutely wonderful in having those students come, because without a single word of English, it was really just thinking about, we have to do what's best for kids, even if that means that the numbers are a little imbalanced. We have to make sure that we're able to provide them with the bilingual support that they need all day long. When they're going to specials classes and things like that, yes, of course, that's an English-only situation, but they're also being hooked up with a bilingual buddy that they've been with all day long. So, the class seems rather seamless, because they're always having someone there to help translate and support. Yeah, and I think just due to what they are simply facing in the environments that they're coming from and the situations that they're coming from, and they're coming here wanting what's best for their kids. So. Yeah.
I'll just, I'll briefly add, beyond some of the other campuses, it's really different with each family, of course, that comes in. We have some that are coming in highly educated, quadri-lingual that are coming in that are purchasing homes, whatever it may be, or not. And we've got some families that are coming in, as Dr. Berger describes. Really, we've seen, we've seen both. I would say almost every family that's registered has been multilingual to some capacity or another, regardless of kind of background, if that makes sense. We are, but we are seeing families that we've considered to be highly literate in the home language, plus others as well.
Well, thank you, Dr. Berger. So, I have up here our WOIS STAR ELA, our results so far. So, in third grade, we have 40 in the spring, achieve at tier one, 41 in the fall, which is a one increase. It's great. We also had an increase in tier two and a large increase in tier three, as you can see. That, we believe, is, and I'll mention later in the next steps, is due to just new, they have to have prerequisite skills, and they have to, they're expected to apply those skills. As Dr. Berger mentioned earlier, the test is a little bit different when they get into third-grade STAR. And so, we're confident that with our interventions and supports, and in this winter, that we're going to see some intense growth there. In fourth grade, if you see, you'll have, in spring, we're 40 in tier one, fall 35, tier two, 16, and in the fall, 28. And then, in tier three, 16, and then 24, again, an increase in both tier two and tier three with a decrease in tier one, accounting for the summer slide that we sometimes see, as well as there's a population of newcomers that we are, we are working to meet their needs. And again, as we get to know these students and as we get them in the proper interventions and the proper supports, confident that they'll gain that growth back. In fifth grade, we have a decrease in tier one from 54 to 39, in tier two, an increase from 12 to 15, and in tier three, an increase from 13 to 26. We, again, that's a larger summer slide than we expected. We have a new, you know, we're working on some FMP, and we have adjusted our SIP goal to meet these needs, and we're constantly tracking where our students are going with our SIP goal to make sure that we're meeting the needs of students as well, so that we're not letting any of these tier-three students fall through the cracks and that we're applying appropriate intervention as needed. So, confident that we'll see some growth there. This is where we're at right now. That accounts for a 52%, so 52% of our students in third grade have achieved some growth in specific scale score, 42 in fourth and 43 in fifth. All right. And here's our math data. As you can see, in third grade, we have 65 students exiting spring in tier one, and then 56 in the fall, 12 in tier two, 10 in the fall, nine in tier three, and 21 in the fall. A lot of these numbers, you're going to see, the math curriculum is far more rigorous, especially in third grade. Again, there's brand-new skills that they're being asked to apply. So, they're taking the rote knowledge of basic math, and they're asked to apply it to new skills. It's a new test with new skills. So, that's what we are seeing account for the tier three, we believe, as part of the reason that we're seeing that. In tier one, fourth grade, 41 in spring, 34 in the fall, 12 in the spring, 17 in the fall for tier two, and in tier three, we saw a slight decrease in tier three students, which is great. Again, we're applying appropriate intervention, getting to know the new math curriculum. That is 45% of our students who have grown in an RTI or in basic scale score. In fifth grade, we have 49 in the, in tier one in the spring, 38 in the fall, 20 in tier two, 23 in the fall, and 11 to 14. So, a slight increase in tier three there and a slight increase in tier two. We're seeing these numbers across the board, as you can see. This is in our PLC process, we're looking at data whole-scale. So, we've looked at the STAR data, we've looking, we're looking at class exemplars, and we're looking at applying appropriate intervention as needed. Our classroom staff and exemplars that students are, our teachers are bringing to our PLCs are showing that we're experiencing some growth. So, I'm very excited to see the winter numbers when they come out. All right. And here's our Spanish language. So, you can see here, we have an increase in tier three in the fall from one to 10 for third grade, six to 18 in tier two, and then a decrease in tier one, which, again, is not what we'd like to see. We're counting for a summer slide. These are a little bit bigger than a summer slide, so we're, again, applying appropriate intervention as needed. In fourth grade, you'll see the same one to 10 from tier three in the spring to tier two, I'm sorry, to tier three in the fall, nine to 11 in tier two, and then 26 to 12 in tier one. And then, fifth grade, you'll see an increase in tier three, an increase in tier two, and an increase in tier one as well. So, you can see what growth those, each of those numbers account for. We're seeing a lot of growth in fourth grade as far as just basic scaled score. And then, you know, as I mentioned previously, we're working closely with math coaches, working closely in PLCs to bring multiple forms of data to each meeting to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students, so that we can see an increase in these scores come. to bring multiple forms of data to each meeting to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students, so that we can see an increase, uh, in these scores come winter, a couple of weeks here, actually, which is pretty crazy to think about. Any questions before move forward?
Looking at just, for example, the fifth grade had for SLA and ELA and math, the fifth grade had the smallest percentage of growth. I wonder how many of those students, those former fourth graders to fifth were in summer school? And I wonder if that number was less and that would show the larger summer slide that we know of.
Well, I, we're gonna get, um, there's a whole presentation on the summer, on summer school and some of the data that we're seeing, um, that could account for some of it. I, um, I think a large, especially with math, the, the slide that you might see is because there's, there is a, um, it's, it's much more rigorous than it's been in the past. And there's much more emphasis on what we would see in I A R, which is, okay, now that you've solved this, now apply it, now explain it. And, and, and apply it across curricular. So it's, 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 um, as our students are building endurance, I think that, that's a, that's accounting for it as well. That these numbers that we're seeing too. So, and then I know that we're going to present on summer school data.
Yeah, just to answer your question, so there were ten students from fifth grade that attended summer school.
Versus how many fourth graders or third graders?
Fourth graders, there was seven. And then third grade, I'm just not kind of guess why, but twelve.
I was just thinking that maybe that was a smaller group of participants and that's why.
I had a question too. Like the number of kids that took the tests seems to be pretty different in third grade and fourth grade, especially if you go back to ELA. Like there's like twenty additional kids in the spring or in the fall for, uh, third grade and there's like fifteen for fourth grade. So are those new students?
We've had a lot of new enrollees, but I can
Cause I was gonna say the math doesn't, isn't that different?
Yeah, but there, there have been a lot of new and, and a lot of new enrollments in, in the fall, just for newcomers, um, from all situations. So
Is that your Spanish though? The Spanish language arts? Do they take both of them?
Yeah, they, they, they also took both tests.
Okay, cause but then like if I look at math, the numbers that, for math are much closer. At least for third grade, the numbers are closer and, and not really for fourth grade. But would there be kids taking ELA but not the math?
In math, they only take the English assessment where in ELA they're taking, um, in, in Spanish and in English. Um, and I could, I get a number on account for those numbers. It is a mistake.
I was too.
We're just all so excited. Uh, no, there, there is one there, the enrollment has increased. But also in, in going through some of the data for the board this fall, I noticed that in one particular building, some students were not tested in the spring. If that makes sense, I can't account for why that happened, but there were some students that were not tested. Yeah, there is some new, not all of that. Like I said, when I went through an audit and was crossing through to do the summer, so I noticed some kids, kids were not, hopefully that's making sense what I'm saying. Yeah, well, the, the expectation is they make it up. I, I can't speak to why it wasn't done, but it wasn't. So the key is to make sure moving forward that makeups are done appropriately.
Yeah, I'm, I am sorry for the confusion in numbers because it, it does look a little wonky, uh, when you first look at it. Um, but I was like, okay. No, your, your math is correct. Your math is correct. So sorry for the confusion there. We, we do have quite a, quite a few newcomers. Um, but you're right, not to, not accounting to thirty, you know, so. Third graders from last year.
Yeah, the numbers can slightly change because of enrollment. So the percentage is what we use to say like, out of that cohort who was actually here, here's what grew, if that makes sense. Yeah, and they do take it on different days. So if a student's absent the day, they take the math test, they could have missed it. And then if makeups weren't conducted as maybe they should have been, then they maybe picked it up.
No, not at all, not at all. It's
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can you describe, and I apologize if you already have, the timing sort of where in the school year or where in the spring they took it, when, I'm sorry, when in the spring they took it versus when in the fall they took it? And sort of, you know, how much school time there was in between the two?
So they took it in late April, early May of last year. Some of the dates are all, are, are scattered from, uh, from what I've seen in the spring. And that could be due to, uh, progress monitoring and they, they took it and such and such a day. But like it's, it's within the window of time that everyone else took it as well. So that late April, May time period. Oh yeah, in the fall, they took it right away, um, you know, in late August. Yep. All right. So what is the data telling us? Um, the third grade standards require a high level of prerequisite knowledge, which is what I was mentioning before. We talked about trip steps briefly last year, um, but just the level of mastery needed, um, for these, for this test. And then now they're required to apply it in third grade. The test gets more rigorous as students get more endurance for it. And as they, uh, get a better access to that knowledge, we expect to see some increase. Are all of our grades, um, on Edge of Climber, the student growth percentile is, is higher, um, is, is above the fiftieth percentile, which is, is, is encouraging for us to see as well. It shows us that there's some authentic learning happening. And then our SIP goal is, is, is aligned with what our students need. It, it, it accounts for the rigor that is needed, um, in the winter to see some growth there. In fact, we just tracked it. Um, so our, our building level goal is that, is that our students would achieve at least one level increase in F and P, which accounts for the text complexity skills and, and application of, of reading skill. And so currently of the students that are, have been reassessed, seventy-one percent of experienced growth, our goal is a hundred percent. By the end of the year, would experience at least one level of growth in F and P. And then also, um, for, uh, the sub-goal of it, we wanted at least fifty percent of students to be within their grade level band. We're, we're currently at fifty-seven percent and we're in November. So it's super encouraging to see that with the increased focus and the student target portfolio that, uh, student target portfolios that students are doing. We're experiencing higher levels of growth than we've seen. So, um, and then what are we doing next? We're going to continue to focus our SIP goals, um, in those student target portfolios. So the students are more acclimated with the academic language and more acclimated with, with, um, what teachers are looking at. So they're taking more, uh, more, you know, they're, they're having more purpose in their learning and they're understanding what it is that they need to do to achieve mastery, um, increase in instructional minutes. So we adjusted our schedule in the fall to better meet the needs of our student, uh, to better meet the needs of our students. So we wanted an increase in tier one time. We wanted to keep that time sacred so that each student is getting access to tier one instruction and exposure to the, to the, uh, rigorous standards that we're teaching. And we wanted to make sure that, uh, math is, we have sacred, a sacred amount of time for math and a sacred amount of time for those advanced placements and, uh, intervention practices. And so we've been revamping those to, uh, so it's accounting with our adjustment in the schedule. Um, and moving back to the end of the day, we're seeing a huge increase in instructional minutes and a huge increase in, in time spent working on academics. And then we're involving students in the process of goal setting. We currently have a instructional design committee that's working to revamp the MTSS process to make sure that students have a personalized block of time where even tier one students are gaining access to needed interventions, whether that is enrichment practice or remediation. Uh, each student has a personal path that they're working through and, and we're, the instructional design committee is creating a, a block of time during that MTSS process where they are in control of their learning. And then the teacher is a facilitator and is goal setting with them on a bi-weekly basis to, to, so that students can tell the teacher how they're tracking towards their goals. And with that, I can turn it over to Mr. Peterson.
Okay. Well, I think, I think the big question is, is kind of, I, I think that has been asked between school to school is, you know, what is our, our new enrollees looking like? And, uh, ours was, were quite different from Diamond Lakes. We, um, you know, this year compared to last year, last, you know, last year, we had a, a, a pretty large influx of new kids. This year we had twelve during the summer, a couple more have been kind of sprinkling in here throughout the fall. Uh, out of those twelve, I believe, I believe ten were multilingual. Uh, the majority of those multilingual kids were, you know, Spanish speaking only. But what was, what was kind of unique to this, this group coming in, you know, wide variety of, of reasons on why they moved in. But when testing them, you know, they, they were very low, uh, linguistically with English, but a lot of them tested in that second and then that second and that tier one range, um, with, with math and, and ELA or with reading. So really it's not, you know, academically, they're quite strong. It was just, uh, linguistically, they just weren't there yet and they've really been picking up very fast. So kind of interesting here from a, from the middle school lens. So you're looking at our numbers, uh, very, very encouraged. I, I was really happy with, with how, uh, our kids really kind of buckled down and, and showed their best effort. You know, when you get to the older, the older levels, um, you're, you're kind of, you're not only assessing kids academically, but you're kind of assessing them, you know, motivationally as well. So I think this data not only speaks to what we do throughout the year, I think this speaks towards how kids do from, from year to year as well. I want to kind of, kind of explain that a little bit. So initially, when I saw this data, I, you know, I looked at, you know, that tier three all the way down, just kind of catches my eye. You know, we talk about that summer slide of that summer slump. Uh, overall, uh, our kids held pretty steady. In fact, here, if you look at that, that seventh grade tier three, um, we, our kids, you know, we had seven take, you know, seven move out of that tier three range, which was very encouraging. Uh, likewise here with, with this, um, you know, our, our tier one, for the most part, either held steady uh, or went up as well. Um, so, and then along with this, uh, our percentage of students that grew were, were quite strong. Which I, I think kind of is attributed to, you know, as, as we kind of mentioned here with, with Mr. Freiberger, that we tested about late April, early May. Kids are kind of worn down by that time and, and, you know, they're, 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 they're the strongest that they could be at the end of the year, but motivationally, you know, they, they, they've been through a lot of testing and a lot of days. But, you know, coming in, you take that, you know, that, that three weeks or that three months off, um, you know, they're fresh and they, they really, uh, put forth their best effort with this. So I couldn't be more happy with this. But, um, and yeah, our numbers are kind of, are, are sliding towards the right, towards the left direction, which is nice. We want to move those kids out of that, that red range. So sixth grade, we, we moved three kids out of that tier three. You know, lost it, lost it, lost four tier ones, but you know, they kind of ended up in tier two. So we'll continue, uh, working with them. Same thing with, with, um, seventh grade, held pretty steady there at that tier one level. It looks like that those seven that, that were removed out of that's, that tier three moved towards that tier two. So, um, so that was what we, that's what we want to see, especially with the, the intervention programs that we have in place here at the middle school. And then likewise with, um, with the, the eighth grade, it's hard to compare apples to apples with this, just because of the, the new kids that were coming in. But, um, but because the numbers don't add up as, as you were saying, Miss Hale, but, um, but overall though, you know, how, how pretty steady we had a, had an increase on, at that tier one level. Percentage of students that grew though, were right around that fifty percent mark, which is pretty typical, uh, for us. In fact, you're usually ELA is a little larger in the beginning of the year. But I think a lot of this can be attributed to some of that, you know, the L O, L I programming that we've had in place and our interventions that we are, are doing as well with our, our smaller tier two and tier three levels. On the other side here, here's math. Um, you know, this is similar to what we saw last year with the, the number of students that, that grew. This starts off a little, a little smaller. These, the, these percentages usually go up higher than ELA by the end of the year. But, um, but overall here, we, we held steady again, uh, tier one at the, at the sixth grade level, we lost three. We gate, we lost one at the tier one, they kind of ended up in the middle there for, for tier two, typical of what we'd see, some, some fluctuations, there's some minor fluctuations. Seventh grade, we held study with math. Um, and, you know, I always kind of joke here that, you know, during the summer, you know, if anything, if they go to summer school or practicing reading, not a lot of kids practice math. But, um, but what we see here with this is that, you know, there, we don't, we don't see that, that summer slide that you would typically kind of expect, uh, with, with testing here over, you know, after a long summer break. Eighth grade level, uh, we saw a two student increase. When we get into the sixties with the, the number of kids that are, you know, per grade level that are testing that tier one. Uh, it's usually a, a very good sign here and it shows, it shows a lot of progress. But then once again, here we look at tier three at that eighth grade level and four of those kids moved out, which is, which is amazing to see there. But, uh, overall percentages that grew, uh, forty-two percent, you know, of our fifth graders that were now, that are now sixth graders this fall, uh, actually went up over the summer. Seventh grade, you know, forty-four percent move, you know, went up over the summer and then, you know, then forty-five at the eighth grade level as well. So like I said before, very, very encouraging on, on what we are seeing here on our end. And like I echo what Mr. Freiberger says, I, I'm interested to see, you know, what, um, what, what some of our data is going to be looking at, like here in a couple of weeks when we test them again. So our, our next step, so what is our data telling us? Really, you know, as I've kind of alluded to already is, you know, our student growth held steady or improved with our string, our spring star test scoring. But was also, what, what was the, the thing that, that, you know, kind of surprised me and really, um, what I was very encouraged with is our, our number of our tier three students. Those are, you know, those are our kids that are at risk, um, that, you know, tend to, tend to struggle a little bit more. They either held steady or, or those numbers decreased. So, you know, definitely very encouraging there. And I, I think that goes to show that, you know, in that May testing, you know, they, that, that score, that one moment in time when they took that test, doesn't truly reflect what their body of work was throughout the year. And I think that kind of is reflected as we look at from year to year with our, especially with our seventh graders and our eighth graders this year. So what are we doing to address these learning gaps? Um, yeah, we are, you know, we, we have adopted our, our, a new math curriculum, which is, which is much more rigorous, uh, in regards to ambitions. You know, with that increased rig, rigor, that's for all, all of our master's at that tier one level. Tier two math, uh, we continue with, you know, our advisory support, you know, that, at the tier two level with, uh, our, our math teachers, uh, teaching those courses. Two or three is, is dedicated to our, our math interventionist, uh, that is going to continue as well. On the reading side with, uh, you know, we continue our readers and writers workshop, our, all of our tier two, tier three kids, and then our multilingual kids. We continue to use the, the L O I, uh, curriculum, um, for that and, and also that program too. And we are starting to explore that with our, our special ed, uh, caseworkers as case managers as well. So we're going to use that as a resource because, uh, you know, it is leveled and it is, you know, it's something that we have seen some, some really nice results. And, you know, if we have the resource, it's available, it's accessible. We, we want to use that to, to the greatest extent possible. I think our, our case managers have really appreciated that so far this fall. Um, and then finally here, that last bit is we're, we're going to continue our cross-curricular work. Uh, I know people like to think here that, um, writing is, is only during English language arts class or comics class. And well, surprise, um, you know, we, we were incorporating that in, in other domains as well. You know, so those what we call DBQs or document-based questioning or, or claim evidence reasoning, where, where kids have to articulate their thoughts and, and write. And, um, you know, that, that's being incorporated, not only at that, the English or that reading levels, but we're, we're seeing that in social studies. We're seeing that in, um, science class. We're seeing that in their encore classes, uh, you know, they, you know, surprise, you're going to be writing a lot here when you're in the middle school. But, um, but I think, you know, by doing this, I think this is the reason, part of the reason why we're seeing those increases in, in our, our reading data. But also we, we've received some pretty positive, um, you know, data in regards to the number of kids that are reaching proficiency with our I A R data as well. So in the form of almost like a, a thirty percent increase with that, the number of kids reaching that proficient range with, with the, the Illinois assessment for readiness. So, um, quite exciting. Um, I know, I think we've been doing kind of questions throughout the buildings. Do you guys, does anybody have any questions for me? I'm going to take silence as then.
Okay. Wonderful. So, um, the, a couple of years ago, or maybe it was last year, we added, uh, this graph, which is showing, uh, the board how our students in tier one breakout. Uh, and so really the dark green and the blue would be considered the, um, seventy-fifth percentile. And to the night, to the eighty-ninth, then ninetieth and above would be blue. Um, so really, and then once you get into the yellow, that's a little bit of the twenty-fifth touching in there as well. So really all the greens are kind of the, the best measures. And so, um, if you were to blow it up on your own screen, those num, what those numbers are in there are the percentages of the total. And so, um, if you were to blow it up on your own screen, those num, what those numbers are in there are the percentages of the total student group falls into that for that grade. The size of the graph doesn't really matter because it changes with the number of kids that are enrolled in the grade and not how many percentage of students are forming. So in this particular one, this is telling us in the fall, when they come in, they really haven't done any learning yet. First, second and eighth grade are our highest achieving groups baseline. So without us teaching them, um, anything this fall, those three are the highest performers in ELA. That was to go to math, it's actually the same three groups. Good job, way to go, first, second and eighth. Um, you win, uh, what, I don't know what you win, but you won. Uh, so first, second, eighth grade, again, highest achieving groups in math as well. Um, and if your eyes are starting to hurt and it doesn't blow up very well, I can always send you the PowerPoint so you can blow it up a little bit better for yourself. Um, so you can see that, but, um, this is a graph showing our summer school. Yeah, now the question was posed in September, uh, by the board. I believe it might've been, um, Sale who asked, can we look at how our students that were invited to summer school that were tier two and three, compared to our students that did not go to summer school that are tier two and three? So up top, um, that's our, kind of our app, are the number percentage of our students that grew from spring to fall, just like we saw in our other measures. Um, so our summer academy students overall, this is calculated first through eighth grade. Uh, forty percent of our students grew on, on reading and then thirty-six percent in math. And then for those that did not attend summer academy and reading, uh, fifty-four percent of our students grew. These are tier two and three students, excuse me, just tier two and three. Fifty-four percent of those students grew from spring to fall and then fifty percent grew in math from spring to fall. I would say if you can give me like a five percent margin of error, because it was being done by hand and it's, I'm a human, so there's human error there. So I would say five percent grace going either way, um, is much appreciated. And then all students, if I was to take all that data you just saw and calculate our growth, forty-six percent of all students grew spring to fall and then forty-two percent from spring to fall in math. Um, so those are our basic numbers. And so, um, there's lots of positives in summer school. I don't want to get hung up on the fact that there are some changes there that is important to talk about and we'll continue to review that. There's exposure to academic vocabulary going on on summer school, review of important concepts. But we'll be looking at our summer school delivery plan and process. I'm at our DLT retreat and we'll continue those conversations over the next couple of months. And we plan to give the board an update if I want to continue to look at summer school moving forward. I know I shared out some data on that from before. Um, the board, oh darn, it showed the graphics so fast. Okay. Oh, it's flashing, there it goes. Oh, oh, ooh, okay, look at Mr. Hanson. So the board had also, there's a really thoughtful question that was asked by the board of, you know, stars just kind of one measure. That's what we've chosen as a district to show the board. But there's, there's really more that we do that can help give us a picture of how each student is doing. So we're using the diamond and the different sides of the diamond. It was the points and it was the sides, we have some debates. So if you have something the board wants to weigh in on what you prefer, points or sides, um, here's where we've landed. Um, but we do have start reading in math. Um, and then we've put Desa up there, that's our student SEL screener. Um, basically it can read SEL screener or something to that effect. What that's telling us is still so emotionally how our students doing. Uh, we take that a couple of times a year. Our student target portfolios, um, are, Julie Pecker, oh, done a nice job presenting on some work in the fall with Christiane Weber, one of our coaches. And Matt's team is doing a great job at WOAS developing really a digital process moving forward. And Dr. Berger and her team are working hard on how to do a portfolio digitally for our little diamonds. Uh, it's, it's looking really good, but the idea is that students are using this and setting their own goals, tracking their progress. Standards-based report cards are, are going on right now. And then we do all kinds of progress monitoring that Mr. Freiberger mentioned, for example, in his presentation and how we measure our student growth. The nice thing is all of these, but the portfolio show up in EduClimber. So when a teacher wants to pull up a student profile, uh, on each individual kid, they can see all of this when they're working with a student and setting goals in their portfolio. So we see these things being able to fit well and tie into goal three, which is our EduClimber goal and our PLC goal. But the idea is all these inform how we know each student's name, strength and need. So thanks to you, Mr. Hanson, for the graphic, um, and all that work. So with that, we have lots of next steps going on. Um, many of these are already in process. Our math and reading support is ongoing right now, K through five. We've had our standard-based report card, they just went out for the first time and all subjects K through five. And a lot of the curricular work that we're doing with teams is to take a look at some of the original rubrics they developed a couple of years ago and making sure they clearly understand the assessment criteria for levels one through four and, um, making sure they're rating students appropriately. We have a new math and writing curriculum that's huge, a huge lift. Staff are doing an incredible job with it and our coaches are supporting that. I mentioned the portfolio piece. The balanced literacy framework continues, uh, as, um, Sweetie's supporting that with our writing implementation. Uh, a lot of curriculum assessment and design, as I mentioned, trying to update what we're doing for our assessments to match the standards and give kids better feedback. All of the data meetings have been phenomenal this year. Our staff are speaking incredible language and knowing where their kids are. They can do it on a bi-weekly basis and, and just produce some amazing conversations. Dr. Burger and Mr. Peterson, Ms. Pepperell's group has always done a great job with it. They can, they continue to level up and then just a lot of, um, props to Mr. Freiberger and his group as his building is speaking a data language that's really leveled up this year. Um, we are focusing on the models of instruction, which is high reliability schools, level two. Um, I believe that's later on that all schools hit level one status. That's a big deal. Twenty-eight schools in Illinois have ever achieved that with Marzano. You go past level two and you're down to about five schools that do that. So extremely rigorous to show that we're doing right by our culture and climate. And level two focuses on our instruction is done with high fidelity in every classroom. The students are learning with the best strategies that are out there. Um, peer observations will be happening. I mentioned EduClimber utilization already and being able to use that data and PLCs I mentioned. And then, um, really our implementation of MTSS manual is ongoing with how staff are going to place kids in tiers. And I, this year, what we're also focusing on is adding attendance as an intervention at all three tiers. Um, I'm working with Ms. Clip on that and our MTSS team. And then Ms. Clip has pulled the social workers together to really spend more time on the SEL and PBIS tiers, because we're fully staffed at social works. We can do that. So we're very grateful for their work. And then, um, we have some of our surveys curriculum, of course, we review with the board and we'll discuss summer academy. So it's another slide, I swear. It's a really important one. Um, question, okay. Questions and feedback from the board. Thank you so much.
I have some questions. Um. Peter, I have two questions for you. For the summer school, for the students that didn't grow, did they regress or did they remain the same?
They stayed in the same tier. Um, they were, they, I would say they either, some of them scored a zero and some of them slightly regressed in their tier.
Okay.
So it.
Cause I'm just wondering, like, if the summer school is worthwhile for them because it prevented, like, further regression?
It's very possible.
Or if it just was a wash?
Yeah, I don't want to put that up there and say it wasn't, it certainly is valuable. And, and so regression here is usually, it depends, like five points depend on the grade could mean like you went down like eight percent. It, so it, it really varied for each kid.
Okay.
Uh, if that, it makes sense, it's, there's, but you basically very few scores zero, like you hold.
Yeah.
If you don't go up, you, you go down in your score.
I just didn't know if there was like a dramat, you know?
It's not dramatically shifted. If, if we were to present it, and we, we've done it in the past, you would say that, we would say they left tier two and they came back tier two.
Okay.
Uh, and so that really stayed largely the same.
Okay.
So this just broke it out in the way that we present the data to you during the year. Okay. Yeah, so there's, there's lots of positive pieces. Honestly, we'd love to see more kids participate. I gave you some of those numbers. We'd love to see more do it and what do we need to do to attract them?
Um, my other question is about attendance. Are we see, cause obviously with it being tracked on the school report card as well and being kind of a big factor there. Are we seeing like a mix of students that maybe take extended trips with their families? They go back to another country to visit relatives and then they're there long enough that by the time they come back, they've kind of hit that mark, you know, where they've been gone too long? Or are we seeing kids that just don't want to come to school or kind of a mix? And maybe it changes depending on the grade.
Yeah, I don't know what that was.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, well.
Good diversion.
Uh, sorry about that. Um, so for chronic absenteeism, it, it's both. And so what we've done, what we did last year is we just said, we're going to, without developing significant interventions, especially because we didn't have social workers in two of the, two of the buildings. We really tightened up just our attendance communication with families of expectation and that curved a lot of it. And so that reduced our number of chronic attend, absenteeism and dropped us below the state average, which we were glad to see. Uh, so, and we also basically said to any family that's leaving, we're going to enforce the ten days. If you miss ten days, we, we unenroll you from the day you left and then we will re-enroll you. So what that does, it takes us out of the chronic absenteeism numbers, but it increases our student mobility numbers. Because it says that we lost students that re-enrolled them.
Okay.
So that's the way we approached it to some degree. So a lot of the families in here are student, are families that are missing school, um, consistently. So, and I was just talking with Dr. Berger about this a little bit this morning. Um, it, as the, basically the Diamond Lake has the most absenteeism. Um, intermediate, intermediate has the least and the middle school is kind of in the middle of those two groups, if that makes sense. So we had some great conversations around families that are coming to school chronically late. Um, that probably needs some force, understanding of the importance of getting to school. Maybe it may be families that maybe have, uh, a looser attitude around late starts. And what can we do to support those families, um, and think long-term, what that means data-wise? So it, we've hopefully pulled most of the kids out that travel is what I'm getting at there.
Okay.
Unless they do it under ten days, then they're going to show up with a nine-day absence.
Okay. That makes sense. And then I have one last question and it's for Dr. Berger. I'm trying to scroll back to the slide. Um, it's about dual language. So in looking at, uh, re-examining the dual language enrollment process to maximize bilingual support. We used to have a lottery in the district. But it, when we did that for dual language and we had one classroom per grade level, we also had a separate transitional bilingual education program. So if we were to change the way that the dual language, um, process is structured or enrollment is structured, then would you have to offer additional, um, bilingual support to the other students that weren't in those classrooms? And would we be able to staff that?
As of right now, it's here, so there's two, dual language rooms per grade level. Which, when you think about maximum enrollment, let's say there's twenty students. Let's say you have a hundred children that are going to come into kindergarten in the fall. And we're only allowing forty of them to participate. And then remembering that half of those children are Jewish speakers, you're really only allowing twenty Spanish speakers to participate. Our numbers aren't.
Right.
It just, we're not sort of seeing kids to the best of our ability based on that number. Who is thinking about, is there a possibility you're waiting to have a third section of dual? Perhaps, or do we need to look at the way we have our classrooms set up now? We have perhaps four sections of bilingual and it's that fifty, fifty split part. We have a bigger like elder person that only live long and puts back. We also think about, we have to see that our staff, we have our management. Thinking about, yes, she was helping to support. Pushing into classes that let's say you have a Spanish speaker, that part of your community, how will we also support them? To expect those students to.
Right.
Is certainly not a lot, right? We always want to support our values. Here and I talked about this. Trying to figure out what we can do, um, to best serve our students. A lot of what is happening down to the. The number of people we have. And we are definitely.
Sure.
So even with looking at Spanish being so. Here are the means of small this year. We're over the fifty percent. So it's thinking about what's the best way that we're going to be able to.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. And I know it's an ongoing issue.
Yeah, I'll.
You know?
Yeah, I'll jump into that a little bit more. You know, Dr. Berger did a great job explaining different things and we've done, and we've been communicating with our dual team probably since June. June, when I've shared with the board about just, this is what we're looking at for this fall and these are the numbers we're seeing. So we've, we've had great conversations with each grade level and, and talking through kind of what legally we need to do and also what best practice is. And so if, if everybody's not in dual, which is a, there's, it's a real challenge to practically staff that. If you want to have.
Right.
A robust dual program. It is considered the best, two-way immersion is considered the gold standard in Illinois. It's the best thing you could do for students because it's an additive model. You add literacy in a language and keep literacy in your home language. Uh, the, if we don't, if we keep it at two sections, which we can, you just have to have a second model that's more robust. We technically use a model called transitional bilingual education pull-out push-in, which means that we have bilingual staff that can support our students as needed in this. You, you teach, you help them with enough Spanish so they can access the English. And then you can layer back those supports only as needed and they can be supported then by the ER resource teacher. In the case of DLS, it'd be Basula Brown. So we'd have to make sure that we have enough, um, Spanish support to go around for those students that are not in the dual program moving forward. So if we keep it where it is, then we have to think about, is that the best model for us? And our team, the group of teachers doesn't necessarily love the self-contained TBE. Um, because those students are, are isolated, if that makes sense.
Right.
They're, they're much, a much bigger fan of a push and pull-out model. If we can look at that, then you support the Spanish as they get to the English. They, they're not going to learn Spanish literacy.
Right, right.
Their access in the English.
Yes, that's on the goal.
That's where the lottery system comes in as well. We figure out who's in what pot to get pulled for dual and the rest, we have to make sure we robustly support, just because we'd see our numbers jumping. And we want to make sure we're, we're proactive and we're making the right choices for our kids. So staffing's course of conversation and that is in the factor of, of what the best course of action is.
It's a different credential though for, for dual than it is for, um. The interventionist. Yeah, the interventionist, right.
Uh, no, no, you don't, you don't have to. They might want bilingual for both, because it's order for it to be TBE, uh, just to count as our bilingual intervention. Being into a dual, they have to have access to a bilingual certificated teacher. In the same sense, intervention, they have to be bilingual certificated.
Right.
You can sort of get around it if they're world language Spanish certified.
Okay.
You, um, and you can do an emergency test where, like, I could pass the Spanish test, um, for TBE. And I could, or the target language proficiency test, I could teach it for five years. So that, that is a way you can immediately qualify for bilingual, it's just pass the target language test.
Okay.
Dual language teacher has to pass that if they're teaching the Spanish, they have to have that bilingual certification. Um, but you can, you can kind of work within, if they pass the world language Spanish test as opposed to the, the bilingual. It's not really what they state wants. Um, and if somebody passes that, the encouragement is, okay, if you can pass that, try taking the target language proficiency test, much harder test.
Yeah, we've had staff that passed one, but then never got to be able to pass the other one.
It's, it's very difficult.
Yeah, so then they taught something else.
Yeah, so really you have to have that certification. A lot of schools struggle with that. A lot of schools have seen over the course of the summer even where they, they went from not having a TBE program, where you have to offer bilingual instruction to having one, just based on a number of families that moved in and they're not prepared for it. And so you really, we show our best effort that we're being forward-thinking, which is what we're trying to do. If that makes sense, it's a great question and it's on our minds all the time.
Um, I guess this is for Dr. Berger as well. Is the lottery system targeted for the Spanish, for the students whose primary language is Spanish? Is there, when we participated in dual language, we were in the lottery as a non-Spanish speaking family. And is that not, is, is the cla, are the classes not fifty, fifty anymore? Ten native speakers of English, ten non-native speakers.
Because in some of the situations that we have to. When they child not speaking.
Okay.
So there is a little bit of an imbalance, absolutely. But yes, the goal is always to start it with that perfect.
Is there, are there enough students who are requesting, non-Spanish speaking students who are requesting to be in bilingual? Or dual language, I mean.
Yeah, it's not that we don't have enough requests. It's some, right now, it's just strictly numbers. If there's simply enough kids. Because enrollment is, is rather low in here this year.
Because enrollment is, is rather low in kindergarten this year.
Thank you. We appreciate all the time you guys spent putting this together. Um, I think it's very helpful and as we've seen it kind of evolve, evolve over the last few years, I think this is giving us more data. And kind of setting us up to understand better how the year is set to progress. So thank you very much for all your time and putting this together. We greatly appreciate that. Um, that moves us out of presentations and into our business agenda. So Eric, do you want to talk about the tax levy?
Yeah, all I want to do is just show I think two slides to just give you an overview of kind of what's just the main highlights are. And then during the truth and taxation hearing, I'll go over a little bit more information.
Okay.
I was going to just reference some page numbers, but I figure this is going to be easier.
Probably.
So, uh, levy's being presented tonight, tentative levy. So it just needs to be presented twenty days prior to the adoption of the formal levy. It's going to go in the December first edition of the Daily Herald and a formal adoption will hopefully take place on the twelfth. I'll file with the county shortly after that. And I'm just make sure I go to the right pages. Uh, you could ignore all the wording on the paper, but so the levy is at five percent this year. So we've hit the P tell limit. Um, six point five percent was the actual C P I. So we'll be levying the full amount this year plus a new property that might take place. So right now we're estimating about two point one million dollars of new construction. And then I, a conservative number right now is five percent increased existing property. It's between five and about seven and a half percent that I'm talking to the, uh, to the assessor's office. So, um, right now the tentative levy is at five percent increase of existing property. I may adjust this slightly before the official levy is presented. But I'll present you some information on that. And then I just wanted to present you. This slide is always the, you know, the most important one to me. It has two years of historical data. But the blue highlighted section, uh, in your present and your packet, that is what we're going to be requesting. Gets adopted for our levies. So it still has a slight balloon levy element to it. The yellow is what we expect to receive right now. So that is what I'm budgeting right now. My updated projections by fund. And then it's, you know, anywhere between I think six and probably ten percent higher for the balloon levy for most of these funds. So just to make sure we do capture everything, just in case new construction. Ends up being a little bit higher than anticipated. And then just added one more slide this year. A lot of the numbers impossible to read right here. But I tried to give an estimate on what our taxpayers might see for, uh, their home values and what their property taxes might be like. So I just gave an example for a three hundred thousand dollar home in column A. What that would look like with a five percent increase to your home value this year using my assumptions. And you know, the home values are assessed at thirty three point three percent. The, uh, the homeowner exemption is going up from six to eight thousand dollars this year. So in my example, we're going to have a ninety six thousand dollar, uh, home assessed value with our assumed tax rate right now. Uh, they're going to see an increase of about, uh, two point eight one percent to their actual tax bill, which is a hundred and twenty-four dollars in District seventy-six. And District one twenty is listed below. That's from their most recent presentation. So overall, I just tried to do an assumption for what their tax bill might look like. So it all goes up and down in relation to the value of your home versus everybody else in the district. But that is really just the couple bullet points I wanted to highlight. Most importantly, what we're asking for versus what we assume we're going to receive. And we'll, uh, do the truth and taxation hearing. That's required anything over five percent. So we've hit that the last couple of years. But especially with C P I at five, anything over that, which is new construction, we're going to hit that anyway. So all districts presumably are going to be doing a truth and taxation hearing this year. So that's it. If you have any questions, please let me know. I could be happy to meet with you separately and talk about this. So it's a, it's an easy process in Lake County because the assessor's office is really transparent in terms of what their assumptions are. DuPage County, I just saw ours yesterday in DuPage and it is, um, it's a lot of guesswork. So they take a lot of that out of it. So we have really accurate projections. We were within a quarter percent last year from the tentative levy to the actual. Thank you.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Then we'll move on to that resolution. Um, whereas the taxing district must determine not less than twenty days prior to the official adoption of the aggregate levy of district, the estimated amount of taxes necessary to be levied for the year. And whereas the truth and taxation requires a public hearing, if the estimate of the aggregate tax levy exceeds a hundred and five percent of the amount extended previous year, therefore be it resolved, Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six Board of Education approves the tentative levy as presented and will hold a public levy hearing on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Ms. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Cundella? Mr. Houghton?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Okay, the next item up on the business agenda is just for review and that's the omnibus vote agenda. We will vote on that at our next November meeting. Um, the third item on the business agenda is a personal item and that is also for action this evening. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one new hire. We have two resignations. We have two leaves of absence. And we have one retirement notification. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan? Mr. Cundella? Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Houghton?
Yes.
That motion is also approved. Um, the next item up for action is the school maintenance grant. Did you want to speak to that?
It's the same one we've applied for the last couple of years. It's pretty much a guaranteed fifty thousand dollars for facility projects. So it just needs formal board adoption.
Um, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six Board of Education approves the recommendation to apply for the school maintenance project grants. Make available local funds to meet the local match requirement. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Mr. Houghton?
Yes.
Mr. Cundella? Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan? Mr. Becker?
Yes.
That motion is also approved. Um, the next item up is also for review and that is the West Oak Campus parking lot sidewalk replacement. Very exciting. Like truly exciting.
Yes, it's going to be so nice.
I'll just give you just an overview on it. So the, the process we use for this, we, we've spoken with our architects, many partners on this. Um, to do a full tear down, tear everything down, uh, rebuild it all, regrade it all. Uh, it's, it's at least a million and a half dollar project from the estimates I've gotten. So we want to use our money, uh, I think at a, at a more fun way than just doing parking lots for a million and a half dollars. So I worked with a partner Midwest, um, mechanical. They are, uh, they did a really nice thorough analysis, did a lot of core samples for the grading and the, uh, condition of our asphalt. So there's a couple, they, they have an tiered selection of, uh, replacements. So it's full tear down in a couple of bad areas of our parking lot. Just regrading partially in a couple and then seal coating a very small amount. But then it's also going to involve a large amount of concrete replacement. So anything from the district office to acorn is going to be replaced. Um, so we got a, uh, my favorite word, it's a comically small amount of money for this project. So we got a, uh, a really nice bid. And it's a very similar process we've used for some other, um, uh, mechanical contractors. It's an open bid model and this is the, uh, the lowest bid that we received. So just about, just over five hundred thousand dollars to get a full new parking lot is going to allow us to use that more. Uh, a lot more fun ways down the road here. So. Any other questions on that?
I think we're all glad to see it.
Yeah.
Um, that wraps up our business agenda. Moving on to board discussion. Do we have any items for discussion this evening? Okay, moving on to FOIA requests, we had one. I have two questions about this. Eric, were those impact fees, those are fees that we were actually paid. We received that seven thousand dollars.
Yes.
Okay.
Those, those are fees that we receive when a developer gets to sell a plot of land.
Yeah.
Prior to getting a permit there.
Okay. I didn't know if like it's, I think it's different for, uh, if you're building a house.
If you're building a house, you're paying.
Yeah, yeah. But I think it's the individuals paying the fee as opposed to like, that's the fee for the whole development.
Correct. It's got to be used on facility work or expansion of.
Um, but my other question is just about the FOIA request in general. Like this is a very generic email address and a, a kind of a generic, we don't really know who's asking us these questions. So is this something that we should even respond to?
You.
It's not signed by name. It's signed by Civic FOIA. If you Google them, there, nothing comes up. Like is this spam? I mean, I assume it's some kind of phishing, like where they're just phishing to collect data rather than.
Yeah.
It being.
Literally not a super FOIA expert on this, but I've just had the question.
I don't think you usually have to respond unless you can like identify that it's like a real person or real entity asking.
Yeah, I'll be happy to look into that a little bit. But it's, I've seen these emails.
Yeah, it, it seems like there's a lot of.
Some of them are.
There's a lot of groups now that are sending out anonymous random emails, collecting all sorts of information, which is fine. I believe in FOIA, but I also think that it, it starts to become burdensome to constantly be providing information that we don't know if these are even real sources.
Yeah, absolutely. Most of them are commercial requests. We get one quarterly.
Yeah.
Smart here and it's, uh.
Right. Most, or we've seen media, we've seen, you know, we obviously have seen various different ones. I just, when I looked at this, I was like, well, this is seems strange because it's not identifying who it is. And if you Google, you can't identify the entity.
Well, and usually what we do is if this is something that's sent out like throughout, we look at it case by case. But if it's something that's sent out like through a mass, like to all of Lake County, let's just say, somebody usually gets on and says, do you have this? And they'll follow up with it and then send it out to all of us. Like, don't respond or have your legal team respond or the legal team respond for all of us. But if it is an undue burden, like we'll discuss it before we actually do it. But if the data is readily available, we just provide it.
Sure. I just want to, I guess I just want to be kindness in the fact that we've seen more and more of these come in. And I don't want people wasting their time, you know, responding if this is something that we don't need to respond to.
Yeah, I appreciate that too.
That's my two cents on FOIA. Notices and communications. There were so many fun things.
There were so many fun things.
Just a whole bunch of seat all stuff. And then, um, there was the D seventy-six highlights and head diamond dish episode was. So cute. Who was the state of Marshall, man? Who was the, for Halloween, who was the Marshall, man? You? I wasn't sure if you were. Well, I wasn't sure if it was you or who was Sparkle. There was a lot of costumes, so. It was very fun.
Sparkles is different.
Any, at any point.
On the day. Sparkles is different on the day. But yes, we, uh, had our October Diamond Edge. We, the principals and I presented at the I P A conference. Congratulations on all of us being commendable ratings. Um, our sparkle spotlight for those three staff members who earned the passion. Um, from each of their passion, um, award for each of their schools. Diamond Dish, of course. And then I don't know if you guys saw, I think this is the video that I heard.
It was very, very cute. But how did you, can you give us the background? How did you get, um, Ms. Lassick there? It was very sweet.
Yes, she was quite surprised. And today when I walked in there, all the girls were like standing around her, you know, of course, talking about when is she going to get married, what to do, what are you going to wear, who are you going to invite, all that kind of stuff. So it was, it was fun.
Oh, girls. I mean, like I heard all about it from the seventh graders, that they were very jealous that they weren't in the assembly. Very mad.
Probably ran, ran the other way. Yeah, well, she's a great teacher. So that was evident. So yeah, those were all the celebrations that happened this month. And then, I'm sorry, that was it for the highlights.
Great. And then now we have public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. We do not have an audience, so we do not have any public comments or petitions. Um, under others, we have the agenda for the conference this weekend. Um, there's also an app. I think all of you probably have gotten emails to your board email about downloading the app. Um, then there's the D L S therapy dog info.
So we wanted to share that with you. Dr. Berger put together a nice memo of summarizing kind of the need for, um, to have a therapy dog to meet the needs of our students. And I think, Mr. Becker, you spoke about this earlier with our students coming in with sometimes some social emotional trauma as well as students that may not speak the language. And the dog might be something, someone that provides comfort, love and care for our students. So Dr. Berger researched this and shared a proposal for us. We wanted to give you the information. So if you had any questions. Um, prior to the November twenty-eighth meeting where we'll be kind of doing a formal proposal for your review, you'll get to meet the dog that they've selected for us. And then I think a representative for Canines for Care will be here to answer any questions. Um, and Mr. Rogers has, um, been representing us as the district for like logistics and legal reasons, legal, um, issues as well as insurance. So we're kind of making sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's with all of this. So in addition to Sparkles, we may have a D seventy-six therapy dog as well. And then, uh, item C is just our West Oak Campus Wrestling Co-op that we do annually with Fremont. So that's just there for your information. And that is all we have.
Fantastic. I have one more others. Um, I realized tonight Alisa was sick. We don't really have, other than we have higher room thankfully, but we don't really have anyone on the board that's like a backup secretary or that's kind of learned. I think Dave and I know how to do it on paper, but we didn't learn the computer version. We're old school. So, uh, I was thinking at our next meeting, if someone is interested in just sitting next to Alisa and learning how to do it. So that we do have someone. Background, so. If you're volunteering.
Yeah.
No, I'm not. Yeah.
He's the guy.
Okay, fantastic. Oh, don't worry. I'll remind you. No problem. Okay, fantastic. I think that wraps up our others unless anyone has anything else. Yeah. Yeah.
I think we split the cost depending on the kids. So it's, it's pretty balanced. I mean, it's not like they're going to have thirty more kids that come through here. It's never really been. Which is why we share with them because they don't have a lot.
Yeah, and this is, like, this has been going on for probably over a decade.
Ever since I've been here.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's much bigger, but I don't think that the number of kids involved is really different.
Which is why we do the cooperative with them. Yeah.
Well, there.
And we get the name and when we get the trophy, we get to keep it. So it's nice.
Okay, um, so that wraps up our meeting. Now we will move to executive session for the appointments, employment compensation, discipline, performance. Or dismissal, specific place of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony. On a complaint lodged against employer against legal counsel for the district to determine solidity. Pursuit and disciplinary cases and for collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees. Or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of. May I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Sullivan? Mr. Cundello? Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Houghton?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes. Okay.